I would like to remind everyone to please make sure your cellphones are turned off or to the vibrate position, please. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on TV channel 99 and rebroadcast on W M G J radio. This meeting of guests in city council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
President Echols is absent today and our meeting will be chaired by the president pro tem, Councilman Cannon. Let's see, Councilman Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Enright.
Here.
We do have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business and I would like to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene, Father, in the midst of so much tragedy around us, Father. We thank you for the opportunity to come before you and just ask for your grace and mercy, Father. We thank you for the opportunity to reach out to you and appeal to you, Father, and we ask that you continue to grow us as a city, Father God. Touch those that are in decision-making capacities, Father, and grant us with the wisdom that we need, Father, to be both fair and prudent, Father. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in city council meeting held on February 19th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of February the 15th through the 21st and the 22nd through the 28th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for both weeks.
Proclamation, the mayor's not in here, so we must not have any and we'll come back to it at a later time today. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine was a hearing in regards to nuisance on property at 1119 Sixth Avenue and it has been postponed to a later date. Our next public hearing is resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for D V C Enterprise LLC doing business as a hideout located at 2811 East Megan Boulevard. This is for lounge retail liquor license. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Apeer LLC doing business as a food center of Nakalula located at 301 North 12th Street in Suite 5. This is for retail beer and table license off premises only. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, do we have any new business today?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider. It's a resolution approving advanced travel for Robert Avery and Billy Harris to go to the N L C conference, Congressional Conference in Washington DC. It's, I ask for unanimous consent to consider this.
Second.
Okay, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Okay, then, we get a second?
Second.
Do we get any discussion?
This is a one-way ticket to Washington. I'm Josh and I hope to have a good trip. We go to Washington once a year and lobby our congressional delegation up there and we have been successful in bringing back some bacon from time to time. Hopefully it will happen again this time.
It's one-way, but see Bill and I gonna get together. He's gonna pay for one-way and I'm gonna pay for one-way, so we'll be back.
I'll get you back.
I'm glad we know y'all coming back. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do I have any more new business?
Yeah. Mr. President, I thought maybe we just come right down the line. I have two resolutions that I would like to introduce today and ask for unanimous consent to consider. The first is a resolution authorizing agreement with Levatron, Leverton Brothers for Entertainment and Smoke and Folks on Saturday, April 13th, 2013.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Do we have any discussion? The only discussion I have, these guys, I think some of them was around when I was in my younger days. They was really good back then. I know they've got a lot better, so they should be a good act up there.
In your younger days?
In my younger days, yeah. Ain't been too far away.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I also have a resolution rejecting all the bids submitted and authorizing a re-bid for bid number 3222 for the Springfield Avenue roadway structure project, bridge replacement.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider this resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Are there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is, we're rejecting all bids. The lowest bidder withdrew his bid, so the engineering department is opening it up for all new bids for the Springfield Avenue Bridge replacement.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Some more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have three items here. I'd like to bring two of these up in tandem and then bring the third one up by itself. I have a resolution authorizing agreement with Simplex Media and a budget amendment for that same agreement, an ordinance highlighting a budget amendment, and I ask that we bring those both up today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution and the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted to consider both items.
Move for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So, the resolution essentially is authorizing an agreement with Simple Pixel Media LLC to design a website for the shelter Etowah program. And of course, the ordinance is for the budget amendment capturing the dollars, which equates to $4,597 for this particular website.
He did say that the money was coming from, what, federal?
It is, as I understood it's coming from.
Disaster fund, okay.
Just change it over.
When I started reading, I think it hit me there what it was, okay, alright.
Any further discussion?
Well, you know, I will say this while we talked about it at length upstairs, one of the things that this website will do, among other things, is highlight some of the Take Shelter locations throughout the county. You know, some of what's being kicked around obviously is the extent that a municipality should get involved in highlighting Take Shelter locations because of the liability associated with, you know, making these available. But I think, again, at its core, this is a very good thing. It gets information out to people and that's really what we need as it relates to these crisis situations, so.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both items.
Mr. President, I have one more item and I ask that we consider this resolution today authorizing an agreement with Gov Connection for server virtualization.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Should I define what virtualization is? I mean, that's.
Some council member up here couldn't say that. I might go say who he was a while ago. Go ahead with us.
I had to ask. So, this is essentially the city taking a number of physical servers and converting them to virtual servers, essentially. So, we all, I think, are now becoming better versed on what the iCloud is, and this is akin to that. That may be oversimplifying it, but that's essentially what this is and it's kind of dragging the city more so into the 21st century, if you will, so.
Devin, probably anybody 20 years old or less know everything, everything about that.
It's just the ones up here that know.
Thank you.
There is no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business? There is no further more business. Well, that brings us down to department reports, committee board, et cetera. Patrick, you want to come up and speak to us about the E M A? You gonna report on recent activities during the National Preparedness Week?
You turn it off? There we go, okay. Yeah, we appreciate y'all letting me come up here and I apologize, Ms. Nelson, for the confusion a couple of weeks ago. February 17th through 23rd was severe weather awareness week and I just wanted to let y'all know what all your E M As doing, what all we did for severe weather awareness week. Of course, we're always preparing, we're always learning, we're always training for severe weather. We set up various businesses around town, allowed us to set up and program weather alert radios. As most of you know, we don't have weather alert radios to give out anymore. The state discontinued that program. But always people needing radios programmed, they're needing them looked at, a lot of them, put them in their closet, they don't understand how they work. So, we tried to set up and get out there and program radios for them. W M G J and Z 93 were very helpful. They helped me, they let me come in near the drive time in the morning and speak about severe weather and take questions and just talk in generalizations about things that people can do to prepare themselves and their family. T B N, right up the street here in Rainbow Drive, they had Denise Cooy, our deputy director, and myself out for a 15-minute program. They have a community program that they tape and we talked about emergency preparedness and safety in the workplace. So, we did tape those programs, which will be airing in April. We had a storm spotter class in Hoax Bluff on Thursday, the 21st, where we had approximately 25 people attend that class. We do it again in conjunction with the National Weather Service and they're good enough to come up and put on the class, about two hours free of charge. Also, on Wednesday, the 20th, we set up at Academy with ABC 3340 and James Span and programmed radios. We probably programmed 300 to 400 radios, which is, I'd love to do more, but that's 300 or 400 more radios that are programmed, programmed correctly, that will alert people in our counties to when there's severe weather. Also, the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, the Gaston Times was instrumental, as well as our local radio stations, about helping us get the word out about the sales tax holiday for preparedness merchandise. So, once again, all the municipalities, City Gaston, everybody in the county are very welcoming, they're very helpful to allow us to come out and help their citizens program radios and hand out literature and try to make sure that everybody's prepared. As you know, we're coming into our primary severe weather season, so we want everybody to make sure that they're prepared for it and ready for it. I thank you for your time.
I was gonna, go ahead, Ben. I was gonna ask a question.
I was just thinking Patrick.
Oh, I was just gonna ask a question. I know we talked about it upstairs and I think Devin alluded to it. We're gonna be dealing with some shelters and I tried to get the definition of what a quote "shelter" should be. For instance, I do know we have the shelters that are qualified through FEMA and all those type things. But if I wanted to get my church to be a shelter, my church has to be made out of straw, brick, wood, or what do you do to?
Right, and Councilman, I'm gonna yield to my boss on that because he knows a lot more about that in his area. I don't want to give you any wrong information. So, Mike knows a lot about that. If he wants, Mike, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, we spoke about that in pre-council.
You want to come up to the mic? Yeah, I know we spoke about it in pre-council, that's why I wanted to get to the public to, because we're gonna be announcing that there are several people who are gonna be volunteering their facilities as shelters.
That's true. Currently, we have about eight. We plan to have them throughout the county. We have some areas that do not have shelters readily available for residents out in the county. And we get many calls every time severe weather comes by, where they can go to shelter. It's hard to define a safe place. If you live in a mobile home, almost anywhere other than that mobile home is gonna be a safe place. These churches have volunteered to come forth. Most of them usually have basements or they have interior walls that are surrounded by other walls that people can shelter in. They offer a greater amount of protection than their homes or especially in a mobile home for these people to shelter in. They're not FEMA certified. We only have two shelters in Etowah County that are FEMA certified and they are limited in scope of how many people they can hold. But like I say, these churches, it's primarily churches, they have come forth and volunteered their facilities for public shelters. We'll be working with them and with the legal department to make sure that disclaimers are put out that they understand, people who go there, understand that these will not be certified shelters, but they are enhanced shelters, better than what they are currently in.
So, then, if the church is interested, then they need to contact you.
It'd be best if they contacted us, yes.
Well, and Mike, while you're there, I too want to add to that because, you know, we've been after having safe places or safer places for our residents for quite some time now. And I want to applaud E M A for the step that you all have taken to try to provide that for the citizens. The legal, the legalities of it and the disclaimers and all will be worked out by the legal department and E M A. But we've taken a step to provide a safer environment as we're going into the tornado season now. We're taking steps to help protect our citizens and I applaud you for that and I appreciate it.
And I thank you. And just one other thing, being we represent, E M A represents the whole county. Right. At this present time, Southside is putting in a 100-capacity certified shelter. Rainbow City's putting in two certified shelters and the City of Glencoe is putting in a certified shelter. So, those will be in the future. We'll also have three that are fixing to be bid out to go into the Colts Bend area, the Pulletide area, which is adjacent to Colts Bend, one out in Gallant. These are gonna be 50-capacity shelters. So, we're making some progress in shelters.
Is there any more money available, grant money? Do you foresee that being something that may happen in the future?
I'll put it this way, the only way we usually get grant money is if we have a major incident that requires a presidential disaster.
Okay.
I don't really wish for that.
And we have another electorate in Washington DC. Okay, thanks.
Correct.
Matt, what does it cost to build a shelter for 100 people?
It'll normally run about, if it's fully wired, electrical vents, which some of them, if you reach 100, you have to have some requirements from FEMA. They're usually about $85,000. And these are certified shelters, 365, they'll withstand the EF5.
Are they above the ground or in the ground?
They're above ground. And they're really attractive. You'd think that they would be sort of ugly, but really they're attractive. And they serve a very good, and you can get them in various sizes.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate you. Thank you.
One more thing I just want to point out, I failed to do this when I was speaking before. We are still going out, we're continuing to go out and watch the kids in all of our area schools and in Etowah County schools. And when I say county, I mean all the schools in the county. We're still going out and we're watching them do their tornado drills and addressing any concerns from the staff, from the teachers, from the principals, and they've all been great. It's great to go out and see the kids do this. And as far as we're aware of, we're working with the State of Alabama Board of Education and their safety director has told me that he is not aware of any other E M A in this state that proactively goes out and watches the kids do their tornado drills. And I thank Mike for that, Mike's been great. Everybody, there's only five of us and we're trying to get to every school in the county and they've been very cooperative. It's very good to see the kids doing their thing, going and hiding and covering their heads and the teachers knowing what to do. And the point of it is to make sure that they are doing proper procedures and to let parents know and grandparents know that your kids, they're safe, they've got procedures in place and they've got safe places that they can go in their schools and we're continuing to do that.
Do you have any plans going into the City of Gaston, our schools here in city?
Oh, yes, sir, we have been through the whole, when I say county, I mean like Gaston City, Talley City, we're going to all of them and we have been to Gaston City High and we go back when they ask us to come back. If there's anything they want to change or any recommendations we have, they ask us to come back and watch them do their drill again. So, they've been great, it's been a good program and we're continuing to do that, too.
All right, thank you. The next on the list is a citizen's request. Ms. Thomas, is she here?
Yes, she's here.
Okay, would you like to come to the mic, please, and give your name and address to the city clerk? And you've got five minutes, please, ma'am.
My name is Alice Guyes Thomas. I live at 1312 Fourth Avenue, Gaston, Alabama, 35901. This talk was scheduled for the last week of Black history, but you all were out of town, so here I am today. History is a part of something lived by our own flesh, either past or present. So, I take this opportunity to speak to the City of Gaston about the treatment the African American has when it comes to its history in the City of Gaston. If you look at the history book that the City of Gaston put out every so often, you see two things, a picture of Carver High School and a restaurant that was on Third Street. And I, when the S E L C president came in and presented those numbers last week, my mind began to turn over. And I said, well, where do we fit in? Where is the history of the African American in the City of Gaston? And I came to the conclusion that we don't have one. At no time has an African American been celebrated for anything that they have done in success or failures in the City of Gaston. And the racism and the segregation has clouded it. And my mom used to say to me that it's a poor dog that won't wag his own tail. And I'm wondering why, why is it that we have no recognition in this city? We have contributed to everything that has gone on in the City of Gaston. But our contributions have fell short of anybody saying, "Thank you," or "You did a good job." And I wonder if there is some hope for the City of Gaston, because Gaston looks like the city of old. If you go to the courthouse, you go to the public places in the City of Gaston, it looks very much like it did when I was nine or 10 years old. So, I'm wondering if there is still hope for some changes in the racial makeup, in the hiring, and I'll find more black faces in the places that serve the City of Gaston. And I want the administrators of the City of Gaston to think twice about my black sisters and brothers, because it is my love for my sisters and brothers that I came here today. You have youngsters coming up in this city and they have no place. They don't know what to do. Nobody talks to them and discusses the problems that we have in the City of Gaston. And we've got people that have lived here all their life and just whatever the city has thrown at us, we've taken it. But I think it's time for us to turn the page and ask for something new, some real justice for the African American. Because, you know, I have a friend, Mr. Floyd Don, who had done great things in the City of Gaston. And during the Black History celebrations of all the years I've lived in Gaston, not one person in the administrative position has ever given him anything, not even a plaque. So, what does that say about Gaston? It says that your racial injustices need to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. That brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Lee, you want to go first?
Well, yes, sir, I'll be very brief. We've had a lot of discussion this morning in pre-council about several issues and I'll just say, stay tuned for more information when the E M A gets their website up, you'll see more information concerning safe places in the county. The only other thing I have is, now, you know, we've had two tragic accidents within the city limits of Gaston in the past two days. Tragic accidents which family members have lost loved ones in very tragic means by accident, one over on 759 and one over on East Megan Boulevard. At this time, I would just like for you to keep the Adams family and the Bothwell family in your prayers, because these are unexpected losses and they're going to need your prayers, so keep them in your prayers as they go through these terrible times. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to reiterate what Councilman Harris has already spoken to. Those are, I mean, it's all, these are awful incidents. And again, to echo his sentiment, I do want to reach out to those families and extend our prayers and condolences to those families. I also want to, you know, reach out to the family of Officer Mark Hericks, who was injured on 759 in the line of duty. I think a lot of times we forget just how hazardous the role of a police officer can be in just what sometimes appears to be routine duties and routine items. So, again, we do send our wishes, best wishes out to his family and him as well. Also ask that those responsible for adjudicating the workers' compensation process be compassionate and reasonable as you walk him through that process, because that can be confusing at I don't know, Lee, if we have the capacity to fund any kind of reward pool from our positions as council members, but that's something I'd like us to explore if we can. Because in the Larry Bothwell scenario, I think there was a hit-and-run item, a hit-and-run issue there that actually caused the incident. So, if we have any capacity, I'd like to be mindful of that and be able to explore the opportunity of funding. I do, I would like to, in the sake of time, I'll make this brief, but I, you know, we were in Montgomery on last week and so I think where we're probably more meaningful when we visit either Montgomery or Washington is when we have the opportunity to petition our legislators. Now, as a general rule, I will say this, many of you are much more effective at getting things done as it relates to that legislative processing in Montgomery. things done as it relates to that legislative process in Montgomery than we can ever be, but that doesn't stop us from trying and so we do continue on the behalf of those folks that we represent to petition them and it's always better to catch them when they're at home because they're not as distracted when they're here in their offices. It's very difficult to get time with them in Montgomery. But a couple of things I want to highlight and want people to be mindful of, you know, from time to time, we give an update or summary on what we actually discuss or review when we're in Montgomery or Washington and this is, again, the review of what was covered in Montgomery. For those of you who don't know, there's a competitive bid law that's being considered, basically increasing the preference for local businesses from 3% to 5%. There's a municipal debt recovery bill that may touch a number of folks and it basically allows the state, when you owe the state money or the city money, to withhold state income taxes to recover that money and right now, that's not something that's in place. Municipal employee liability, and this is, you know, when you've got instances like what we saw this week in terms of accidents, without any coverage, municipal employees are basically exposed from a liability standpoint. So, there's legislation in place or that's being presented in Montgomery that would essentially give, and I'll use a police officer again as an example, a police officer in the line of duty who does something and it results in injury could be sued and there would be no limit in terms of that liability or they would not be granted any immunity as a municipal employee. Very concerning because it really precludes and makes difficult our ability to recruit top talent into the public sector and, of course, it puts a lot of families at risk. So, that's something we should really be talking to our legislators about. The ABC sales tax, I think the Gaston Times ran a study on, I mean, a story on that not too long ago. They talked about what it would mean to go away from the ABC board, a scenario that we have now. And then, of course, there, you know, last but not least, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of laws being moved forward in both the House and the Senate relative to firearms, some as it relates to workplace allowance of firearms in the workplaces. And I'm telling you, I've been in a few workplaces in my day and I don't know that I like the idea of someone at an employer's, on an employer's premises being allowed to carry a firearm, especially after they've had a bad day with their supervisor. Very scary scenario. And, of course, there's also legislation out there that allows individuals who don't have a license to transport firearms to and from a firing range. Who's to say what defines to and from? So, basically, that's a loophole for me. It gives me an opportunity not to pay for that license and whenever you catch me with my firearms, oh, I was on my way to a firing range. So, you know, it's important, you know, as citizens that we pay attention to what's being passed and watch very closely. We saw, you know, one of the more high-profile items this week was the tax credit that was added at the very last minute to one of the education bills. You know, I'm not going to say a whole lot about that, there's a lot of opinions. I always question the maturity of this state to do things along those lines because our history doesn't support our ability to do it. But with that said, that's what's being considered in the current session right now, so please dial yourself in and become familiar with what's going on because it's important that we help to impact change in Montgomery and in DC. Thanks.
Councilman Avery?
Yes, I too want to send my condolences to the Adams and the Bothwell family. When we were in Montgomery, my only statement was, "I've got two men and a truck and all you guys need to pack your bags and get out and down here." I mean, it's just a bunch of, I mean, a bunch of folk down there that's doing some crazy stuff. When I go to Washington, I'm going to have the same things, I'm just going to need more than two men and a truck, but everybody in Washington, all the legislators up there need to pack their bags and go home because they ain't doing nothing but creating problems for the American citizens. We've got to be very, very mindful of the people that we vote into office and we need to hold them accountable as to what they're doing. So, please, ma'am and please, sir, keep up with your legislators, whether they're state or whether they're federal, because it's a joke what these folks are doing and, of course, if we don't hold them accountable, then they'll continue to do nothing or do some crazy stuff. I wanted to address Ms. Thomas's remarks a few minutes ago and she's absolutely correct. There are a lot of things that are going on in this community when it comes down to issues, when it comes down to racial issues or diversity or whatever you want to call it. And what you've got to realize, we had a discussion several weeks ago at the chamber on diversity and there was a panel that was there and we were discussing it. You have to work at diversity. It ain't just going to happen and we've got a chief sitting down here and I want to publicly thank him for working at it. We just hired four new officers, I believe it was, and out of the four, three were black. You have to work at that. It just don't happen. This administration is doing a better job at hiring or promoting because it, we don't have a whole lot of turnover when it comes to employees and so, but you still got to work at it. When they start leaving, you got to work at it and I will give them credit at this point in time that at least we're working at it. I would hope that we do better. I will give this council a lot of credit because we don't have the control of employees, so we can't deal with that issue as to who they hire, who they don't hire. But when it comes down to professional services, I want to say that this council has been very, very insistent on that we have diversity. When we deal with people that the council can deal with from the professional service line, I don't think there's any other community or city in the state that probably look at that like we do and we make sure we include diversity in those things. So, we do have control there as a council, but when it comes down to employees and when it comes down to these private employees, employers, you know, we're at their mercy. I made a statement then and I got a lot of eyebrows and I don't mind making the statement now because I'm very, very blunt. The only thing that's going to help us in this city when it comes down to diversity is we just got to have a few more good funerals and once we have those, then I think our young people and the people who are coming along will be okay. We, you know, we've got a lot of old heads and they just got to die out. That's just plain and simple. I mean, people are looking at me like, "What are you talking about?" When you've got old heads and people who are ingrained and they're set in their ways, until they die out, we're going to fail to handle this problem. You just might as well understand that. So, when we have a few more good funerals, Gaston will become a better place, I promise you. That's all.
Councilman Stewart?
I grew up in Gaston and I've seen this city and that area make great strides in racial relationships. I think we've got a great city here. I think we treat everybody fairly and as we should. And I probably shouldn't even say this, but, you know, you talk about diversity, I'm sure that, and I agree with that, the city ought to have the number of minority employees according to their demographics, I agree with that. But then I look at diversity in our high schools. I'm sure that this group is going to our PTO meetings and petitioning them to, "Let's have diversity in our athletic programs in our high schools." Have you thought about that? There's no diversity there at all. So, let's go all the way. That's all I've got to say. Sit down, ladies and gentlemen.
Did you?
Councilman Reed?
All I can think of to agree with Robert is we probably need a few funerals on both sides.
I made that statement. I'm sorry, I didn't, we need them on both sides.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, anytime you come into the middle to have an agreement, you got to be there.
You got to have them on both sides.
Chief, would you give us a kind of report on Officer Harris and tell us how you're doing that we didn't do? Not to take away from, I think the deaths were absolutely, that's just terrible, but here we do have an officer like Derek said that is here and he's hurt and we need a report on him.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he was discharged yesterday, so we're checking up on him today. So, that's all I have for this time.
Okay, so we'll have a further report later on. Okay. The only other thing I have, Thursday, March the 14th, at 6:00, at the old Alabama City Fire Hall, we will be having a meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to look into ways to take over and organize Clayton Cemetery in respects to clean up, cutting the grass, you would say probably perpetual care, but we need people there whose relatives are buried there, we need people who own lots there to come and give us their ideas of what needs to be done, but the main thing is it's in the repair. The person died a couple of years ago was looking after it, but we need the people involved in Alabama City to get out and come up there and be with us and get this project underway and get it done. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Reed. Councilman Harris?
Yes, I needed to add one more thing to my comments about the tragic deaths that we've had. Chief, and I know that our police force is doing everything that we should be doing that we can to investigate both of these deaths. My understanding from newspaper articles, the newsprint, and then from being on the scene on Meagan Boulevard was that that was possible a hit-and-run situation on 759 that perhaps may have precipitated that accident and that they were looking, this is all I'm hearing, I'm reading this in the newspaper, that precipitated this, that caused this man to cross the median in front of a, and go, run in front of a, pick up, track the trailer. On Meagan Boulevard, the Adams kid had come out of Anniston and had been chased out of Anniston and Glencoe picked up the chase and I don't know to what degree the chase ensued, but I beg you, sir, to please put every effort we can into finding who's responsible, if anybody's responsible other than the drivers, who's responsible for those two tragic accidents, please, sir.
There will be no work session or council meeting next week due to National League of City Conference in Washington. We'll resume our regular schedule on Tuesday, March the 19th, at 11:00. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
We adjourn.